And here is Commissioner Lopez. So grateful, not just to be here, but to be in person in this beautiful school. I want to thank Pam Cool, my chair of OCPS, and my counterpart in this area at OCPS. And I want to thank the school administrators for opening up this beautiful location for us. It really, I think, when I first came to the idea of having a community meeting so far away. So I'm really, really grateful that we are all here and helping and saying, I want to just, let you know, as a community meeting, this is really about all the pieces and parts that come together, all the just kind of gathering. And so we wouldn't be able to do anything without all of the pieces and parts in our community, which we are so fortunate to have, of course, our partnerships with OCPS, with the Orange County, our Sheriff's Department is here tonight, our Fire Department is here tonight, we have the local planning and Parks and Rec. And really, this is about you, this is about your concerns, your issues. I will tell you, I was born and raised in East of Florida, but I've lived in this side of town since 2000, and I feel it's home, my children are raised here, and I feel so grateful for the love of the community that they've been able to grow up with, and I want to make sure that I'm pushing forward that type of environment for the next generation. But how cool are you to us? I'd like to introduce my chair, Pam Cool.
Give me a minute, it is so nice to be back in person and thank you and welcome to Horizon High. It is just a gorgeous school, and it's housed in both the middle and high school this year, as the new middle school is getting built west of here. I am going to roll through some of these slides really quickly, but that's okay, because all of this information is on our ocps.net website, and if you go to the school board page, you'll see the links especially to the building, things that are going to show up here. But I wanted to at least give you a visual overview, so if I could figure out how to work it, click there. We are the ninth largest school district in the country and the fourth in the state of Florida. We were eighth prior to COVID, but we came down just a little bit, but it's going back up rapidly. Most people don't know that they have over 25,000 employees, over 14,000 of those are teachers, and the rest are made up by paraprofessionals, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, the administrators of the schools, et cetera. Since 2003, there have been 59 new schools. Now, in this community, we beat that to nine. The next closest two years ago was six schools. So just to put that in perspective of how many new schools we have built and how many have been replaced or renovated. Twelve new schools are planned for the next five years, eight elementary, three middle, and one high. That high is not here, it's in Lake Nona, we've gotten two in the last year, so we won't get any new high schools. I always share this slide because we have a generous budget, there's no question, it's a generous budget. But when you break it out and you look nationally at per student funding, we're low. And when you look at this chart and you see what the cost of living and the inflation rate has not been taken into account yet, because we've seen double-digit inflation happening with the cost, right? Our housing costs are going up, gas is going up, food is going up, that doesn't include that in this chart. We still have a funding gap on where we should be and where we were in the last several years. Part of that is if you've come from other places in the country, we don't have state income tax here, so it's property taxes, it's the local one mill, which I'll talk about a little bit later, and that's pretty much for operations. You can't see this right now as well as I would like you to, these maps are again available on our Orange County website, but I'm going to roll through some of what's going on. So Horizon West, current schools in District Four, you can see the very top is Sun Ranch, and the very bottom is, on the left, is Waterspring. And then you'll see the New Horizon High, which is the little blue dot there on the bottom left. These are the schools that have opened since 2012 in our community. That's a lot. And then these are what are in the construction plan for the next 10 years. Now, that does get reevaluated every year, but these are locked in for this timeframe. And right now, we have the funding for up to, I think, 27, really locked in, and as the calculations come back in with the half penny sales tax and what was happening in the state, we'll know even more. And it does, it can change, it can kind of roll around. Our growth on the west side of town has really kept us online or even advanced multiple schools in the last seven years, so we keep, well, actually, nine years, the last nine years. These are the schools that are under construction right now and that are opening, and they even look more progressed than when this picture took place. If you drive around your neighborhood, you'll see them. So that's the great part of it. Again, if you have any questions about the locations, I want, I want you to reach out to me. Let me introduce Marilyn, who Tierra is, who is also here to help and can make connection. Marilyn has worked with me for a long time, she hasn't been solely mine the last couple of years, but I'm glad that she's here tonight. Repportionment, how many of you know about reapportionment? Okay, I got to tell you about reapportionment, because this affects everybody's life. So reapportionment is what happens after the census is done and we relook at districts. And of course, we hear a lot about federal and state districts, but this goes all the way down the governmental chain, and it happens with school board and county commissions too. What this means is that your voting block could change, and is very likely to because of the growth that we've had in my district, which is District Four. There will be maps that come out. If you care about who you vote for and who represents you and what your map looks like for that representation, please make sure you're paying attention and you give input. It's very regulated, there are timeframes we have to have it done, and it has to all be done by December. In fact, there's another reapportionment meeting going on right now on the east side of town. We had the very first one about a month ago, and they've been going on every week. And I appointed two people, and each school board member appointed two people, to go out, get community input, and make maps for that. So please pay attention to that, maps are becoming available, and take a look. And that includes for the county commission, for your state representatives, so on and so forth. We can't thank the voters enough for the one mill. The one mill has allowed us to do things in this district that most other districts can't do. We've consistently maintained STEM programs, arts, and athletics. We've been able to add social workers and mental health even before we got state funding for some of those things, thanks to that one mill. So we've had very robust programs and options because of the support. And in the last election cycle, when the referendum came up, we had, I think it was over 84% support for this referendum, because we've reinvested that and made sure that we have teachers. We are hiring bus drivers and people who want to help with crosswalks. We need crossing guards. We are offering bonuses, you can get ahold of the county and the sheriff's office for the crossing guards, get ahold of OCPS. But we have had, on average, about 100 drivers short of what we need. This is a national problem, it's a very local problem, but it affects many of you. If you've had kids or grown kids who have waited at the bus stop because somebody didn't show up or they didn't show up on time, this is why we need bus drivers. We have many magnet programs, actually, we're starting a new program in aviation at Dr. Phillips, so there'll be, that's an academy, not a magnet yet, but we have everything from agri-science to aerospace, from how to run a credit union with an entrepreneur program to light manufacturing and entertainment, and of course, our international studies program at Dr. Phillips. Then we have academies, like Olympia has an Apex Academy, which is like an IB program. So there's academies within schools too that tend to pop up as schools kind of figure out their character and what the community needs as we go forward. So if you have suggestions for this school, please let them know what you would like to see. I'd like to see energy here, because we have a solar farm right behind us. So that's one of the things that I've talked to the principal and the leadership about, is really trying to boost energy. We started a CFX partnership, because they're using alternative energy sources on the highways and putting in autonomous vehicles, that's the other thing. And I'd also like a Polytech, I put that out there everywhere I go, a 612 Polytech that focuses on that and has a music conservatory. It's digital and metal. Generation Wow is something that we started four years ago, and it targets young women and brings women leaders mentors to the young ladies, sophomores through and juniors, that are not the ones involved in everything. There are maybe some at risk, but it's a lot of the young ladies that are just kind of going through school and they're doing okay, but they don't really know what they want to do. And I'm always recruiting for people to get involved in this, we have clubs at each school, so if you'd like to be involved, let Marilyn know, and she'll make sure you get the information for Generation Wow, which we'll be doing virtually again this year. But it is a blast when we do it in person, it's kind of like convention meets rock concert meets inspirational speaker, so we dance, we sing, we cry, we share, it's fun. Learn to Start Institute, this is a new program at West Orange High, it's an entrepreneur program that is really helping students learn life skills, whether they go on to be entrepreneurs or they go on into the workforce right after high school or want to go on to college. But it's an amazing program, so stay tuned to hear more about that, we piloted it there, and hoping it'll be highly successful when we get to expand this program. Career and technical training, the one thing that I am passionate about the most is probably making sure every child graduates with a certification in something, whether that's Microsoft Office or auto mechanics, or welding, or culinary service, or med tech, or cybersecurity, or simulation and modeling. This is vitally important to teach workforce skills, and oh, by the way, it makes learning fun, because it's experiential learning, and they get to figure out that the things they're learning in a class from a book actually do get applied a lot of times. And so I'm very proud to say that, I think we've had over 280% increase in certification programs in the last eight to nine years. And those of you who know Mike Armbruster, he was a huge part in really championing that, and we wish him well and health, because he's been suffering with cancer. So that's really amazing, and I look forward to even more and more programs on that. Cocknia, I am going to skip over that right now, and I'll come back to it. Our graduation rate, in the 80s, our graduation rate was in the 50s. We now have a 97.9, it used to be eight, 97.9 percentage rate in our traditional schools of graduation. That is huge, it's been huge strides, we're very proud of that. And a lot of recognition has happened, and a lot of benchmarking has happened. These organizations are ones who come in and they critique and they compare you to the best of the best of the best, but they also teach you the tools of the best of the best of the best. So we are constantly looking for those organizations that will help the staff strive forward, and the superintendent has done an amazing job with that. Super scholars, super scholars are an amazing thing too. These are the schools that all of our super scholars have been accepted to since 2012. So when you talk about Ivy League ability, we have students who are out there competing with the best in the world for slots at some of the most prestigious colleges in the world. So that is pretty neat, as well as in the armed forces, so it's really neat. More than 10,200 students took at least one AP test and scored three, four, or five. I hear the criticism sometimes that we push kids to classes that they may not be suited for, but I'll tell you, that's the minority of the kids. Every child needs to experience the challenge of trying to get through those AP, and that's one of the reasons why we do PSAT in ninth grade, is so that they can kind of figure out where they are and we pay for it before they take that SAT test and the AP test. But this is important that every child, no matter their socioeconomic, no matter their background, get an opportunity to excel in their academic career if it suits them. So it's been a wonderful program, and a lot of kids who thought they couldn't do it, did it. Career and college, college and career acceleration, you can see here that we are growing in percentages leaps about, and again, that's very, very important, as we want to have a qualified workforce that comes out. And then our certification of excellence, you know, if you're not rated in the financial world, it's really hard to do the building that we've been able to build, because those of you who have ever had to take a loan out on your house or a car or anything you want to buy, you know the better rating that you have, the cheaper the money is. Well, it's no different for us, so the better rating that we have in our financial controls and transparency, the better rating we get when we do have to bond money against income that we know that's going to come in. So that's important. There's a few things in the state legislative session update that I wanted to share. The governor made a great announcement this weekend, could close our per student gap. Please call every legislator and support that, because that's really, really important. The more we can get the proper per student funding, we could actually compete in the marketplace to keep our bus drivers and offer teaching as a very viable career for a lifetime. It's getting harder and harder in this marketplace when you don't have enough money to give competitive races, and that's really what that boils down to. Keep an eye on the empowerment scholarships at the statewide voucher program. Parents should have a choice, I'm all about competition, I have no problem with that. What I have issue with is the challenge that we have with funding and not having transparency when the dollars are moved, or that they can divide the baby and not pay anybody enough money to offer support services and infrastructure, and that often happens. And then And this is how you can get ahold of me, so if you want to snap a picture of that so that you can always have it. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Nicole so that we can get the next speaker.
Thank you so much, I feel very grateful, OCPS, I have three public school kids myself, two of them are, I was watching some of these and thought about the opportunities they had to do things like music programs and the AP scholars with distinction, and just my gratitude to teachers in their life. I know it's been a very challenging time for our school board members and our teachers, so show them some love whenever you get a chance. She also, Kim, also reminded me of the redistricting is also going on, well, actually, at all levels for government right now, because every 10 years, we get our census back, and we find out that what we have seen in our community is true, and in this community in particular, has been a tremendous amount of growth. There will be very big changes likely to District One. The maps are all available online, if you go to Orange County, Florida, redistricting. And you really, as a member of the public, are encouraged to engage that software, you can submit a map to one of the board, we also have an advisory board, and they are able to present that. So it'll be ongoing, I think they're taking their last look at the maps the first week in December. If you have any questions about that, reach out. And I want to apologize, because I did not mention that we're really excited to have Orange County Library Systems here. Yay, Danielle's here and the library crew, we're so grateful, it's another really great part of living in Orange County, is having a robust library system with all those resources. So I would like to turn it over now to Orange County libraries.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Oh, come on. Hello, thank you very, very much. My name is Danielle King, I am the Chief Branch Officer with the Orange County Library System, and I am here to talk about the Horizon West Library. We are making progress, so we're very excited. And with me here tonight, we have Mindy Cummings, everyone say hello, Mindy. She is the real estate manager with Orange County Government, and we've been working very closely with her, so she's here to answer any questions for you. So some of you may have heard the rumors that there's a library coming in Horizon West, and yes, that is true. So back in July, the Library Board of Trustees voted a concept brought to us by the City of Orlando and Orange County to lease property next to the Horizon West Regional Park. This is very exciting for us, because originally, we were looking at purchasing that 17 acres, and now we have the option of having a crown lease and building a 20,000 square foot library building on approximately one to three acres. So we're very grateful that they brought this option to us. So what this would include, of course, is the building and an outside event area, which we're also excited about, because if we've learned anything during COVID, we need to have an outside space. And none of our other libraries have this, and we can do amazing environmental programs out there, family programs, if any of you ever come to our bubble programs, we can do that out there. So we're very excited about having this option. The crown lease would be 30 years with a three, three, five-year options, and the library would build the building, and we'd pay for that. We also would be building the parking lot infrastructure and access roads. Now, we're still working on that agreement, and this does take time, and this, of course, will need to be approved by the library, by Orange County, and by the City of Orlando. So you might be wondering, what have you been doing since July? Well, we've been meeting with the county and the city every other week to talk about the site and to go over those details of what we need to put in that contract agreement, so we'll be meeting regularly about that. And for us on the library side, we wanted to make sure that once we have the agreement, we just want to get going and be ready to build as soon as we can once that is signed. So what we have done is we were looking for requests for qualifications for architects, and so we put that out on the street in October, and we had some firms submit their proposals, and we narrowed it down to three, and we're bringing these to the library board in December. And so by December, we will know who our architect is going to be, so that's really exciting. We also put out a request for qualification for the construction manager at RISKS. This went out in November, and they will be sending their qualifications and proposals to us in January. And then we'll follow the same process, we'll review them, and send our top three to our library board for approval. And while this is all happening, the county and the city are busy behind the scenes working on our contract agreement, which will then need to be approved by the library, by Orange County, and by the City of Orlando. So what can you do as a resident here and a community member? We'd like you to get involved, we have a website dedicated to the library expansion, go to ocls.info/libraryexpansion, there's bookmarks underway out, and while you're here, take a survey. We want to know what you want in your future library, we'd really like to get that impact information, so please take that survey and tell us what you'd like in your library. And of course, you can always come to a board meeting, they are held the second Thursday of the month at 6:00 p.m., except in December, it's going to be the second Wednesday, so don't miss that. And then if you haven't already, get your library card. Use the library, we deliver for free to your homes, you don't even have to get out of your house, you can go online, order material, we'll deliver them for you for free and drop them off. And we now have a book drop in Horizon West at the Hamlin Town Center, so you don't have to drive to Winter Garden or Window Mirror, although we'd love to see you there, but you don't have to, you can just drop them off at the book drop. And this is actually pretty exciting for us, because we are getting information ahead of time about what your community likes to read. So we see what's dropped off, we see that there's a lot of easy books, juvenile books, and then when we go to build that collection and purchase material, we know what your community wants, so that's very helpful for us. And then once we have all of, everything signed and we're ready to go, we're going to be having some public meetings. We don't know the dates of those yet, but we're going to ask for your input, we're going to ask you what you want in your library, and we're going to really put that in the design, and we're going to be inviting the architects to that too, so you can talk to them. In the meantime, you can come to our library pop-up events. So we host these at the Water League Community Clubhouse, if you haven't been, you should definitely come and check them out, and we're going back to doing in-person events starting in January. We have a story walk coming up, we have a drum celebration coming up in February, and we have lots of programs that we are planning for the future. So please, please, please come out and see us. I'm going to give out a shout-out to Genevieve, wave your hand. She plans all of these events, so she is at every single one, and she's there to greet you and make everything really awesome for you, so we hope to see you there. And thank you so much for coming tonight and for giving me the opportunity to speak about the library. Mindy, did I miss anything? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, it's very exciting. I know there's been so much community engagement over the library, and I shout out to all the residents that have stayed plugged in and made sure that they communicated every step of the way. I don't think you would have had the type of success in making sure that this was staying on track and really getting everybody on the same page without that type of community engagement. Without further ado, I would like to introduce my friends from the Orange County Sheriff's Department that are here. Informal, they didn't have slideshow, but just to make sure they introduce themselves and put names with faces, and really, I'm so grateful for the work that you all do. I know that there are challenges when schools open and communities that weren't there are now all of a sudden dealing with changing, so thank you so much for introducing.
Good evening, everybody, good everybody here. My name is Tim Flonk, I'm the lieutenant with the office of the sheriff's office, and I'm actually assigned to Sector 6, which currently, Sector 6 encompasses everything south of Porter Road, so it should include Disney. So the Orange County Sheriff has signed a contract, has established this contract for many years with the City of Lake One Vista and the City of May Lake, to provide all enforcement services to that area, which with the first contract I signed, was Disney, and there was nothing out here. So the City of May Lake and the City of Lake One Vista have been very gracious to allow us to continue to patrol everything south of Porter Road. However, the sheriff's office is currently going through a computer dispatch upgrade and a computer and a computer, uh, records management upgrade to begin probably first part of 2022. When that happens, we'll be redistricting, and that will become Sector Three. We'll be all of Horizon West. And the, the, that being assigned to Disney, we'll be back at Disney. So. But for everything south of Porter Road, I did some prime stuff for the last 30 days. And this is a very safe area. We've had three residential burglaries, and those all occurred to homes that were under construction. They were completed and hadn't been moved in yet. Someone came in on a weekend and took a place. Other than that, we had one sex crime in this area. It was a domestic-type relationship. So, uh, that is it for everything south of Porter Road. All right? So I'll turn it over to...
Hi. I'm Lieutenant Chris Tatum. I work in Sector Three, which, uh, kind of like Lieutenant Farmer describes, everything north of the, uh, Porter Road. So we deal with that area all the way north to, uh, Coe, uh, all the way out west to Lake County, and then out east to, uh, basically John Young Parkway. Uh, we have a little bit more than that, but the City of Orlando covers a lot of that. So as you can imagine, a very, very big area for us to patrol and cover. Uh, normally Master Deputy Ricks, uh, attends these meetings, so he would have the most information on the biggest issues, but he did pass along a few notes that I wanted to give to you all. I know there were some concerns about traffic, primarily around Southern Lake Elementary School. Uh, there is a big problem, as far as people parking on roadways, sometimes blocking driveways and things like that. We have passed those concerns and done the studies and spent it to traffic engineering. We're just waiting now for signs that will prohibit parking boats on the side roadway and within one block of the intersection of, I believe it's Purple Finch and Lake Hampton is the other road. So that should alleviate a lot of those issues. Hopefully that will stop it. But obviously, if there's any more concerns, you can either reach out to Master Deputy Ricks during one of these meetings, or you can reach out to Sector, Captain Dennis Eales, the captain. I'm Lieutenant Chris Tatum. Uh, and any of our other lieutenants would be able to assist you with that as well. The other concern that was brought up was something to do with golf carts. I guess there's an issue with a lot of golf carts, uh, either wanting to drive around or there's been a few seen in the area. So just to throw it out there, the, this isn't a golf cart community like some other communities that have been established, so we can't have, uh, the ordinary golf carts, you know, driving around as some other communities allow. The golf carts that you do see currently driving around are the ones that have been converted into what's called in statute a low-speed vehicle. There are several different requirements, uh, for those, but the ones that we have seen and, uh, the, the concerns that have been brought to our attention are, have all been verified to be low-speed vehicles at this time. If you do have any concerns or you see those types of things out there, please feel free to continue to contact us, and we'll address them on, um, a case-by-case basis. But for right now, that's, that's essentially what we're dealing with. I know we're waiting for questions at the end, so.
And fun fact, in law school, if I walked into a classroom and lived in it and Tatum was there, I quickly tried to get out of the class because he booked more classes in law school than anybody I know. Um, I want to thank you all for being here. We all, we will have some time for question and answer hopefully at the end, and if there's something that comes up later. I know how to get in touch with them, and we have a great relationship. So thank you again. Um, I now want to introduce our, um, Chief Rios, who is here from Orange County Fire and Rescue. Thank you so much for being here. Last time we had a community meeting, we ran out of room in our room, and I, such a wonderful representative stayed on the patio area and continued the presentation. And so I'm just really grateful for your partnership and help.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Rios, and I am the Division Chief over Strategic Planning and Data Intelligence for the Orange County Fire Rescue Department. It is truly my pleasure to be here before this body of engaged residents. It is truly refreshing. I want to thank Commissioner Wilson and OCSPS for, um, creating a space where we could share information about the services your fire department presents. So for today, I'm going to go over some very high-level topics. They are going to include some quick facts and scope of service for the fire department, station data, and we'll talk specifically about one of the stations that I consider Horizon West. It's in the core of your community, and that station's 44. We'll talk about future fire station growth for this community. And lastly, some community outreach, um, tools that you could use for future engagement with your local government. We're extremely fortunate, Fire Rescue. Under the leadership of our elected officials, we've been able to expand our service to meet the community demand. As Orange County becomes more and more populated, we have the opportunities to grow with our community. We consider Fire Rescue as part of the fabric of your community. And with many different communities, we have a lot of diversity and level of services that we provide. And we'll talk about those more in detail. Just to give you some perspective about the call volume that Orange County responds to, this analysis was taken from September 2020 to September 2021. We responded to over 132,000 calls for emergency service. We responded and transported over 74,000 patients within that timeframe. Those are calls for medical assistance that we were able to take someone from their home or from a roadway to a definitive point of care at a hospital during their worst, almost critical time. Orange County is represented by over 1,500 professional men and women that make up this department. They are truly professionals. We are extremely proud of two things, uh, well, of multiple things, but these two that I am going to mention. We are ISO One accredited agency. Now, to put that in perspective, when it comes to county governments, because of their land size, um, it is extremely difficult for a fire department to achieve a ISO Class One. A lot of it is predicated on sustainable water source. When you factor in a county of our size with a population of over 750,000 residents, Orange County is one of only two in the state of Florida that has this distinct designation. And if you extrapolate that throughout the nation, we are one of only eight county departments to be an ISO Class One accredited agency. These are some of the scope of services that we provide. When you hear the word Fire Rescue, a lot of, and rightfully so, believe that we're only fire-centric. That is very much so, but we are much more than that. Um, not only do we provide fire suppression through our community, we also provide pre-hospital care through basic life support and advanced life support services. Every single one of our suppression trucks are big area trucks that have a ladder on top and some of the smaller units that you may associate with a rescue or an ambulance. All of those have a paramedic on them. Many times you may ask, for a simple EMS call, why don't we see a big ladder truck arrive to that incident? Uh, the reason for that is because of proximity. That was one of the closest units that had the proper attendant on that unit. And we rely a lot on distribution, right? Since our fire stations are distributed throughout the, throughout the communities, by placing a paramedic that has that added training, we are ensuring that we can reach the side of a patient that needs our help within a timely and responsible manner. As it relates to technical rescues, uh, we have a very diverse, um, workforce that is trained and with many different skills, everything from high-angle rescue to confined rescue. That's important in our community. In our backyards, we have a lot of amusement parks. We have a lot of high-rise, um, areas that in the event that you had an executive rescue, we need the resources and the capabilities to do so. We're responsible for those services. We're also responsible for hazardous material. Um, some of the major thoroughfares in our community that cross through, um, this is, um, it's actually a prevalent type of emergency within our community, and we're best equipped to manage those. Another major program within Fire Rescue, it is our 911 Communication Center. We consider our dispatchers the first of first responders. Those are the men and women that are responsible for taking a 911 call, identifying the emergency, and then pairing the level of resources that have to respond to that emergency. And in many cases, at the same time, providing life-saving instructions to the caller. Another section within Fire Rescue is emergency management. They've been extremely visible during the COVID pandemic. Um, they've been visible within the community, uh, in direction of our mayor and our, uh, commissioners in providing testing and vaccination, um, in concert with health, with health services, Orange County Health Services. So they play an important role. They also play an extremely critical role as it relates to hurricane response. Uh, they are very visible when we have those natural emergencies within our community. The Office of the Fire Marshal, those are the men and women, inspectors and fire plans review, reviewers, or examiners, and they undertake, um, compliance. They look at code, laws, and ordinance as it relates to life safety. Uh, their life safety regulatory, um, authority comes from 45 Prevention Code, which is found out there, and then PA, which provides guidance for life safety, um, installation of fire suppressive systems, firearms, exits, egress, and other, um, life safety, uh, elements. Our last one up there is community outreach. So this is the part where we're extremely proud because this allows us to integrate ourselves into the community through open houses, CPR, teaching first aid to ours and to our citizens, to hosting special events, and also educating the public on, uh, fire prevention activity. We talked about one of, what I consider the hub of one of our fire stations within your community, Horizon West, and that is Fire Station 44. Fire Station 44 is its temporary location in the 16,000 block of Porter Road. I will tell you, this model has worked extremely well for us. Fire Station 44 opened up about three years ago and has been providing service to this community. It is a clear example of how public-private partnership works. What do I mean by that? Well, we entered into a lease agreement with Orlando Health to cohabitate on their property, and we were able to erect a fire station there in crack of time, and we're extremely proud of that partnership. To give you some, some depth to the type of activity that Fire Station 44 may see in a 24-hour shift. On average, they respond to about 10 emergency responses. Um, and that's just an array of different categories of calls that they may be responsible for in one day. On average, two auto accidents, a car fire, a structure fire, or at least a report of a structure fire, two miscellaneous service calls, and on average, four EMS medical calls within a 24-hour period. Uh, Fire Station 44, it is not the busiest fire station in our network, but they do have a moderate number of calls. I thought this is a fun fact that I wanted to share with the group. Um, looking at that same audit period between September 2020 and September 2021, it appeared that one day was the busiest day for the, at about around 1:00. What does the future look like for Horizon West? If you look to the bottom of the screen, you're going to see a red box, and it denotes Fire Station 32. Fire Station 32 was another approach to identify a temporary location for what will soon become a permanent fire station. Located in the 14,000 block of East Orange Lake, we got creative and placed the fire station inside of a strip plaza in the public shopping center. They occupy that space, and they have occupied that space for many years. We are pleased to say that we have acquired the interest of a parcel and working through those. And we have funded to build the permanent Fire Station 32 at its new location, which will move in about two miles north, um, northeast. Actually, northwest, I'm sorry, northwest. And the new relocation of Fire Station 32 would be on Hard Rock and Avalon Road. We expect that project to be complete in late 22, early 2023. And that will give that fire station a permanent location. That's important to us. At a time of, of a hurricane or some natural disaster, we want to ensure that the firefighters are prepared and able to ride out a storm at their fire station. And the brick-and-mortar model is the best model to provide the service. We briefly talked about 44 and the model that we have with Orlando Health. However, we have immediate plans to build a new Fire Station 44 in its permanent location. Currently, it's in the 16,000 block of Porter Road, and that's denoted there in the red box. It will be relocated to its permanent housing location located on Southern Lake Park and Reeves Road. It is projected to be complete in winter of 2022. Now, on the same day that we relocate temporary Fire Station 44 and the personnel into their new station, on that same day, we will not vacate that site. The plan is to increase the level of resources available to this community by manner of entrusting Fire Station 48. They will occupy that temporary location. Now, for Fire Station 48, although they're going to be operating off of Porter Road, providing increased level of services by adding another, uh, trans, medical transport unit, another suppression unit, and in addition to that, another, and I'll call it an area, but basically that's the larger truck that has the ladder that allows us to have vertical reach. And it is truly invaluable when it comes to property protection, having a resource like that. And that is slated to be assigned to Fire Station 48. We plan to build, um, permanent Fire Station 48. And if you look at the arrow, uh, kind of in the upper part of this depiction, you'll see that it will move from what is currently standing to be 44. Remember, that is going to be temporary 48. And when relocated to its permanent site, it will be Hammond Grove Trail and Porter Road. And we expect to complete that project and have it built and servicing the community out of this new brick-and-mortar fire station in the winter of 2023. Really very exciting about this project. Uh, this project is Fire Station 49. Fire Station 49 is slated to be built on Spring Hill Peak near Avalon Road and Seidel Road. We're in the process of securing an interest for two acres to build future Fire Station 49. Fire Station 49 currently, we are in the process, as we get into our budget discussions for next fiscal year, to try to accelerate the timeline for Fire Station 49. Right now, funding is programmed into 2025, but we will make the kind of conservative effort to try to accelerate that timeline into 2023, recognizing the growth and the development within your community. So taken in totality, we talked about the network approach. One fire station provides a service, but it's based on reliability of that service. What do I mean by that? If a fire station is on call managing a 911 call, and another 911 call comes in, it is critically important for a neighboring fire station to be able to respond within an acceptable response time. That's the network approach. So when you look at these four green circles, they denote the future of Horizon West. And may I say, the very near future. And those pictures, if you look at Fire Station 32 to the south, then in the middle, we talked about Fire Station 49. On the east, uh, of this image, we show Fire Station 44, and then on the north, we show Fire Station 48. That concentric, if you will, ger-. That concentric, if you will, geographical area of fire stations improves reliability. So if one station is managing a 911 call, the neighboring station can respond within that acceptable timeframe. In addition to that, Fire Rescue, we've entered into agreements and have standing agreements with our partners to the west. If you look over with Fire Station 32, and I'll start there, then I'll go over to the other side. But where Fire Station 32 is located at, to the south of that is Red Creek Fire Department. We have mutual aid agreements that would allow us to partner with them and scale up to meet demand if multiple calls come in within your community. Also, to the west, we have Lake County, which we also have standing agreements with Lake County in the event that we need to scale up because of a surge in critical calls that may be coming in. So when we look at the future, well, when we look at the current, the present, and we look at the future of Horizons West, we feel confident that the fire station coverage is going to be adequate. And as you can see denoted in this image, you have a strong concentration of fire stations providing service to this community. This is just sampling some of the apparatus that you normally will see respond to an emergency. The one, the one that says engine, that is the workhorse of the fire department. It carries 750 gallons of water. Primarily, those are the ones that will respond either to a more acute EMS call or a fire-related call. The center one is WUS trucks, that's for wildlife and urban firefighting, and that allows us to make access into areas that are highly vegetated in order to protect property. Rescue, this is the one that's more consistent with ambulance. Those are the ones that transport to and from definitive healthcare facilities like a standalone ER or an emergency room. We have abilities with our Marine Rescue, our squad, which manages more of the technical rescues and hazmat calls. And then our area, which allows us to have vertical reach in our operations. These are just three tools that I put up. And I think they're important because they do provide an ability for you to stay engaged with information sharing. The one to the left, I'll see alert. It is a conduit in which government can share information with you about public safety messaging. It also allows post-information during a natural disaster, of where the shelters are located at, the point of distribution for ice or for water. And some of the other are just general public safety messaging that your government wants to relay to the community. So this is a resourceful platform, and I encourage everyone that if you have not, please download it. You can download it to your Android or to your iPhone platform. The one in the center, we're missing the one, oh, I think it dropped off from the bottom, but it's 311. And with that app, it allows you to report any conditions that you may encounter within your community. A good example would be a traffic signal not working, a pothole, graffiti, or anything else that you want to relay to your government. This is the ability to do it. You can either record your information and request that someone contacts you, or you can do it anonymously. The one to the right is Pulse Point, and Pulse Point is, it is an ability, it's voluntary, to sign up, and if there's another emergency in close proximity to you, it will notify you. And that gives you the ability, if you are trained in CPR, to engage and perhaps be able to make a positive difference in someone's life. Or it also tells you where the closest distributor is located at in the event that you're in close proximity and could bring you to the emergency. That concludes my part of the presentation, and at the end of the program, I look forward to some questions.
Thank you so much. A big shout out all of our first responders. I think, I hopefully can speak for all of us that we sleep better at night knowing that we have the type of emergency response here that we do. And I think, you know, with the concerns about rapid growth, hearing how far ahead the plans are and how well thought out the coverage is, it just really is a great comfort to all, so thank you again. We have next up on deck our planning department. Jason Sorensen is going to present for us. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Jason Sorensen. I'm the chief planner with your current planning section. Okay. And so I'm going to go over some planning things, planning history, current projects, and then a summary. So what you see here on this map is the Orange County, obviously. The red line indicates the urban service boundary. And you'll notice that Horizon West is outside of that urban service boundary. So what does that mean? You'll find out when I give you the history. And this is just an overlay of Horizon West on what we call our market area map of Orange County. It's a geographical split up of the county into different areas. So obviously, Horizon West is in the southwest market area. And Horizon West actually makes up 4% of Orange County, but 50% of the building permits are allocated or issued for Horizon West. So a little history. So back in the 1980s, there was a series of freezes. A lot of this out here was our citrus groves. So when those freezes happened, the farmers realized that they couldn't stay profitable. So they worked with the Orange County government and came up with a public-private partnership, which was formed in 1993 to consider development of the area. And the framework and policies were adopted in the conference in 1995. And Horizon West became the state of Florida's first sector plan. And so there were a series of specific area plans adopted between 1997 and 2008. So I'll go over each of those. Lakeside Village was our first one, adopted in 1997. It has planned for it 8,915 units. So far, 8,118 units have been entitled. Next up is Village of Bridgewater, 10,000 units. Over 8,000 have been built or entitled. And I'll just go to the end here where you can see the summary. In total, Horizon West has planned for it 40,282 units, entitled, so far 37,437 units. So when they came up with the idea of Horizon West, they said, what do we want, what don't we want? So what they looked at when they came up with the policies and said, what we don't want is what happened out in East Orange County. This yellow box represents two backyards that back up to each other. The front driveways are eight miles apart. So that's not what we wanted in Horizon West. We wanted connectivity, and we got that because we came up with a plan. And these are the fundamental policies for Horizon West. Interconnected street network, mix of housing types, adequate public facilities. So you have your schools, your parks, fire stations, village centers, where you have your commercial establishments, neighborhood centers, and town center. The Village of Town Center is primarily commercial. And minimum densities to support final school buildup. So some built examples of this, where you have APF parks and schools co-located in neighborhood commercial areas, a mix of housing types, and interconnected street networks. There's two examples. And the next screen will show the top right one in the full screen image. Here it is. You can see the elementary school. You can see the interconnected street network. You have town homes, you have single-family homes, and you have a co-located APF park in this next example. APF, adequate public facilities. I don't know why it froze, I'm sorry. And this is another example. In this example, you see the school, you see the park, and then that square, roundabout on the southwest and southeast side of it, you're going to have some neighborhood commercials. So something to walk to if you live in the area. So this is just a sample of what we have in Horizon West based on the policies that were established. So now we'll go through some current projects. So we'll look at the Avalon Road corridor. It's split up into multiple areas. It's going from Avalon Road settlement at the top all the way down to the US 192 Bruce Center at the bottom. And we'll start with the town center. So Hamlin West area, which is... There's a pointer. So this is the Hamlin West area. It has planned for 847 dwelling units and 844,000 square feet of non-residential. And that's at the corner of New Independence and Avalon. Silverleaf, which is the first regulating plan within Horizon West, which pretty much means that they came up with their own code, which was approved by Orange County. So they deviated a little bit from the town center code that was established, but still pretty much the same principles. And that's planned for 2,000 under 26 dwelling units and 2.9 million square feet of non-residential. And Core Academy is an apartment complex of 350 dwelling units. And that's this parcel located here along Avalon Road and 429. And then Horizon View, which is 278 dwelling units and 15,000 square feet of office, 15,000 square feet of retail, and 125 hotel rooms. And that's down there at the corner of Avalon and 429. One of our exciting projects in Silverleaf is this medical school. They can see here on the screen. It's 136,000 square feet of medical school approved, west of Avalon Road, south of Porter Road Extension. So if I can go back one slot or two over that stack. This is the Porter Road Extension, so this would be the approximate location of that school. The map?
Yes.
I can't, I'm sorry.
We'll send this out to everybody who's signed up at the front.
So this will be a huge employment generator. So now we're going to move this out to Village H, Xandavar. And I, there's a lot of projects, I don't know exactly where they are. So Xandavar, Water Lane, Spring Hill, all of these account for about 6,000 dwelling units that are coming. And in Village I, all of these projects are coming. Village I is our most active village right now because it's the most southern. Development has now got to that area as the other villages have built up. And what is, Village I is approved for 4,692 dwelling units, over 400,000 square feet of commercial, has elementary and middle school, and adequate public facility parks. So in summary, Horizon West was established in 1995. Council 50% of the county's residential permitting activity and entitlement activity primarily is at Town Center and Village I.
Thank you so much. I know that that could be its very own meeting, like extended meeting, because there's so much information to cover. So I know and feel like we're really going through this at a rapid pace because we haven't done this in a long time, and there really is a lot of information. We will make sure to share all of this or any part of it that anyone wants. If there's any questions we don't get to by the end, or it comes up in your mind later on, we can always circle back. So don't get, this is the beginning of some of these conversations. Without further ado, we've got our Traffic Engineering Division representative tonight. I'm Martine Humberto, and I'm so grateful that you can be here.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wilson. Yes, again, my name is Humberto Castellaro. I'm the Traffic Engineering Division Manager with the Public Works, and it is my pleasure to be with you this evening. So what are the, what are the goals of Public Works? I represent both our Engineering Division and the whole Public Works. That is to enhance the quality of life of the community, all the residents within your neighborhoods by providing safe, operational, and functional transportation network. So this is a little bit of a different paradigm because when we look at traffic, what kind of quality of life is traffic when the roads perhaps are very congested? Maybe when you're trying to connect and go from one place to the next? When you're trying to drop off your kid and there is not a place in there and you need to have no parking signs? Ah, yes, there is. Ew, I guess a method to the madness. And it takes a village to raise a kid, and it takes many, many ages to make sure that we provide adequate facilities for you within Public Works. So today, what I'm going to be presenting to you are different projects that we have finished within the different categories. So we will talk about traffic signals, it's one of the traffic controls. Neighborhood traffic coming, which is very important for the community. School improvements, and this is a beautiful school. I thought that I had been here before, but I guess two years ago, we were on a similar facility because the auditorium, it looks very similar. But, so it is a beautiful place. Also, we talked about access management and weather reconnaissance, and then the traffic status. So before we go to the actual traffic signals, ew. What I want to say is that within Horizon West, and they have clearly explained about many roads that you have to connect. You usually have, what I have seen so far, five major roads that they are connecting from your residential areas to your neighborhoods, to the schools, to your places of work, or that you use for community. One is Avalon Road, right here. Now, we don't need to travel too far. Second, we have Seidel, right here. And you go to Vicay, and you go to Reeves Road, then you go to Winter Garden Vine. So all of those roads, some of them, they already have been constructed, but there are some issues within traffic. Some of them, Seidel, it is constructed, but also we're going to be going to Lexomar Court, and we need to fix that intersection. But then you have Avalon. And Avalon, it is a major road, two lane, it's getting widened to four lanes. You have Reeves, and you have Vicay, so there's a lot of development. So what comes first, the chicken or the egg? I don't know, it's up to anybody's criteria. But we know that we need a transportation infrastructure to bring you to the residential areas and to the communities. But we need to build those residencies to be able to have those roads. So sometimes, in a perfect world, and we have the Yen and Almodov here, that would work very closely with the developments. And sometimes, things are not perfect, so the development will come in faster than the roads are built. So of course, there's going to be some congestion. Or sometimes, the roads come in, but then you say, we need a traffic signal because now we have a roadway with 200 homes, and they don't give us the space for us to be able to cross that road. So it is a catch-22. But we are here for you to address the problems before, during, the planning, but also after they have been constructed. So let's talk a little bit about the traffic signals because this is a sensitive topic. You know, it is a very good traffic control. Would you look at the signal right here that it was built just before school? We work very closely with the school district. And one of our goals is just to make sure we have a process that we say a signal has to be warranted. What that means is that you take existing counts, you take the traffic, and then you see if it is warranted. So working with development, we said, no, we cannot take existing traffic counts. This signal has to be projected with the volume of students and traffic that you're going to have because on day one, it's going to be warranted. And day one, it's going to be a major problem for the sheriff's office if we do not have a signal. So it must happen. So working ahead of time and planning, this signal was warranted. Also, this Seidel, it was built and designed, designed and built before school started. So we're trying to anticipate as much as possible what is happening. So Avalon Road, signals that have been used, built recently. So this one is one on Seidel. You have the one on Old White Lane, CA. You have the one on Harson Road, Water Lane. And also, you have the one in West of White Flemings, which that one is a temporary signal. But that's not all. You have a myriad of signals as part of the planning. So I can tell you, tell you the Lexomar Road. Also, you have a flash signal, but that is not in operation. That will be a full signal with the developer. New Independence, we're working with the developer to have a temporary signal while the development is happening and the road is widening. Phil Ritzman, also, the developer gave us a whole bunch of money, almost $100,000. And you said, that much? Yes, a signal right now is costing to be turned off between half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars. And that was probably two months ago. And now with the general national supply issue, it's costing 30% more. So ew, it costs a lot to build a signal. Then we have, of course, a street area with new schools. So the Avalon Road corridor, of course, ew, we were getting calls and said, why didn't you plan this ahead? But that is that sensitive balance between the development and also... and also when the traffic control needs to be in place. But we are being proactive. And if we don't have the permanent one, let's have the temporary one because it's a matter of safety, functionality, and operation. Also, we have the Winter Garden Vine. So we had, we just ew, had the signal in operation, the Lackland. That one, the developer agreed to pay for fifty percent of the costs and Orange Campus paying for fifty percent. That one was just installed. A few weeks after that signal was in operation, somebody came in driving and they hid the traffic controller cabinet. So sometimes, things happen. Ew, I guess we addressed that issue. Then for the Equestrian Drive, also in that segment, there's going to be some new development and we're working with the consultant to have a signal. Also, Chief Rios was talking about Fire Station Forty-Four. The ultimate is going to be on Rims Road, but we need to make sure that we provide quick access to them. And usually, they need to have a signal because when it's emergency, they cannot be stopped for traffic. They just need to say, we're going, and everybody stops. So all of these fire stations, we are working with the capital improvements program just to make sure that they have what they need, that they have the adequate access, traffic control, and the mechanisms to serve their community we need. And then, of course, Site One Thirteen, Side Del. Ew, we were going back and forth. And sometimes, I kid you not, that we say, this signal needs to be opened right away. So we are working pretty much round the clock doing the inspections and doing the final certification so you can have a pleasant experience on day one. And one of the things that I tell people, I said, when they come and they went to school, they're not going to be looking at how beautiful your facility is, how well the air conditioning works, all the great classes. If there is a madhouse out there in the parking lot, that's what they're going to be remembering. So we have been able to partner with them to make sure that we give you a greater experience. So I have some pictures for you. Ficay Road is also one of the corridors that is going through some design changes. This one that you see here is at the Overstreet intersection. This one has been widened to four lanes. So we built the ultimate signal that is a mass arm. That is what the county prefers. So there is no problems whenever there is the wind, the hurricanes. So this one was built about a year and a half ago and is in operation, and it was beautiful. Then we have the Avalon Road, the Old White MCA. So that one was turned on probably about three, four weeks ago. So here are some of the pictures that we have. Ew, and as you can see, there is still construction within the vicinity, but the signal is in operation. So it was a great accomplishment. Side Del Road. I know that one of the questions that we got and working with the sheriff's office is the Sevignan School. What is the Sevignan School? And one of the things for people in the Water Lake community, it was still there was construction on the east side. So they needed to walk on the west side, but they needed to cross Avalon Road. So those crossing guards, please, if you know somebody and I'm logging in for the sheriff's office, please, we need those crossing guards because yes, the signal is there. But sometimes, you know how kids are? They have their cellphone, and they're holding out and they're walking and looking this way, and they don't know what is coming. So you have to have the eyes open on the roadway. So yes, so we make sure that we coordinate with the sheriff's office. And there was plenty of discussions and things on the community. And we got it done. We made sure that we had the designated path. We put a barricade just to indicate that the sagu was closed to make sure that your children, they were safe when they were going to school. The Western Way Flemings Road intersection, we got some calls on this one. So we have the Western Way. Of course, that was distant, and they widened that to four lanes. But then with the Flemings Road, ew, that road is going to be widened. Hopefully soon, there is some of the potential development. The issue is, do I wait for the incoming traffic? What do we do? We're working with the developer just to make sure maybe we just give the designated, ew, travel to his bump without any imposing traffic. But this one is a temporary signal. As you can see, these are the spam wire of the concrete. So this is not the mass arm. But this signal, as temporary as it is, is costing to the tune of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand, which it means that the contractor is going to have the developer. He's going to have to go ahead and pay for the rest. But this was installed because of the new development. Now, Ficay, Rims Road, this one is a temporary signal that it was because of the safety concerns within the community. Also, there's going to be a development on the other leg. So this one, we designed it in a way that we can probably save this mass arm. You usually have four mass arms per intersection. But this is just to make sure that we could address the issues and the concerns, especially with all the traffic going to the distant facilities. It was a madhouse, so we needed to provide not only safety as access for the Summer Lake Park. Ficay, the New Independence, this is where you have that square runabout. I had some comments about that. That runabout should be around. But you know, there was a little bit of innovation and creativity. It might not work as well. But this one is also a temporary spam wire signal. So the plans have been designed to widen the road, but the community needed to have the access and also with the speed. So this was temporary. So we are talking about signals, but there's different tools that we have at our disposal. And one, it was the posted speed. For instance, let's talk about Winter Garden Vine. Beautiful road. It's four lane divided. But that road, I bet that you can travel fifty, sixty. You can push it to seventy miles per hour and you ask yourself, why in the world that happened? Well, it was designed and it was aligned. But now it's time to add, what can we do? So for the longest time, with the guidance that we had from the federal government and from the transportation, the federal Department of Transportation, the way that we could look at speeding, at the speed limit in a corridor, it was based on the volume and the actual speed, what we call the eighty-fifth percentile. What it means that once you reach the eighty-fifth percentile, if those cars are traveling at that speed, that's what you have. So this corridor, eighty-fifth percentile was fifty, sometimes sixty. So we definitely didn't want to increase the speed on that corridor. But now, what they have done, which it really makes sense, is that they're looking at density and they are looking at land development, what we call context classification. So if you have more development, guess if you're on Winter Garden Road or Avalon, if you have a brand new street connected to Avalon and you have two hundred homes, guess what do the people want? Signal. When do you want it? Now! And that is three quarters of a million dollars. And how can we anticipate for those things? So sometimes, it's very difficult. So these are some corridors with the context-sensitive classification that we have, that we have been able to look at and work also with the sheriff's office. And we have some other tools that we can reduce the speed. So Wallace Road, these are the limits from forty-five to thirty-five miles per hour. Winter Garden Vine and Road, so we went to the board for approval for every speed limit change. So that was approved. We issued a work order. So probably within the next couple of weeks, it's going to be installed. So the whole corridor is going to be forty-five miles per hour and not having two different speeds. The Summer Lake Park Boulevard, also this one, very important, from forty-five to thirty-five miles per hour. Tilden Road, also another one. So there's a lot of development that is happening. So we are going to the board, to the board this month. So that one is going to be reduced from forty-five to thirty-five miles per hour. And of course, Rims Road from Del Mar to Silver Lake Drive, drive from forty-five to thirty-five miles per hour. What I can tell you, why it is important to have the right speed at the right street for the right location in terms of safety? Because if somebody hits you at forty miles per hour, your rate of survival is almost none, nil. But once you start reducing it, when you talk about twenty-five and twenty, it's like sixty percent if you're hit there on. And sometimes, some of these traffic controls, if people don't hit you at the right angle, but it's at a sign, swipe, and we will talk about runabouts, that they are a great tool that we can use if they're built properly. But the speeding is one of the things, one of our tools that we are talking. We're going to be implementing a program that is called Vision Zero. And Division Zero is, our goal is zero fatalities. Yes, that is a very tough to call. But we have to start and we have to dream big. Start small, but to dream big to make sure that we address our safety issues. So one of the things that we do, working with our partners, is we have the speed feedback signs. So what this is, is so you have an upright post. This is our power. So we don't have to worry about electrical field. And also, you have posted speed, and then you have the warning signs. So what this does, it will detect the actual speed of the vehicle approaching the sign, and then it will tell how fast you go. Once you address a certain speed, it says slow down. Because sometimes, what kids will do is that if you tell them that they can go seventy-five, then they will do it for fun to see how fast they can go. So we have got all kinds of things as we are trying to implement this. But this is something that we can also do as part of the community. Winter Garden Vine and Avalon, eh, not yet, but we'll see. Neighborhood traffic camera. So we talked about what are some of the tools that we have. So over here, we have Overstreet Road, Nobletown Drive at the Tan Boulevard. So on Overstreet Road, we have what we call the speed tables. It's like a speed home, but it has a longer and flatter surface. And then on Nobletown, we have closer the blue dots. So you have a speed home at the Tan Boulevard. Now, it seems that this is a good idea. But let's take a look at the effects. What are the effects? The fire, rescue. If you have an emergency, they need to know where these are because perhaps this is going to be slowing down their response time. So part of this is, yes, let's go ahead and slow down traffic, but also, how is this going to be affected? So there needs to be coordination because sometimes, we can plaster and have these blue dots at every single residential street. But is that what we want? You know, we want to have a safe, ew, access also. So here you have, ew, some of the things. The West Orange Country Club Drive. I know that we have been getting some calls recently. We are looking at this corridor to see what else we can do. Some warning signs for the curves, maybe some speed homes that we have, and some other traffic controls. So we have a series of projects that we have completed, like the speed homes. This is a speed home. Eh, it has a contrast in color, in color. It's kind of a brick. There is the margins approaching it. And also, where do we place these? Sometimes, we place them at the school process or school locations, but this will be the speed table. So we have several, so just going down the list on Lincoln and Benton Shire Road, we have the speed homes, racing crosswalks on the Tan, the middle school, and also the Bay Lake Elementary School. Also, we look at operations and neighborhood improvements. We will talk about the Newbury. That was one of the neighborhoods that were having severe cut-through traffic. And ew, that might be a concern because you might have connectivity, as Jason was talking. And sometimes, connectivity will bring not only the drivers and the residents, but also the commuters. And one of the things is that if you use ways, you know, sometimes, if the people are not familiar with the neighborhood, but you use ways, and that is the passapliss resistance, and maybe your street would be the one that is selected to go ahead and to avoid a five-minute congestion at that particular signal. So this is something that we were talking with the director of Public Works. There's nothing that we can do with ways, but just be mindful of that. That sometimes, you might have unintended consequences that we will have to address. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. And also, the Gold Creek Trail within the Newbury Park. So here we have, this is a brace, pedestrian crosswalk. And it's really beautiful because you have your detectable warning surface. You can see the parallel lines. This is the contrast color. Also, you have the striping. But what it does is that this is raised three inches from the pavement. So what that does is it slows down the traffic, but also, it increases the conspicuity of looking at the pedestrians. So that is brave. Plus, if we have a crossing guard, that would be even better. Some crossing guards. So we also have some warning signs approaching the crosswalks ahead of a school. Eh, some of the speed homes that we had. So also, we have the warning signs. So this is just the design that we have. So it's just concrete asphalt. But yes, it has to meet certain standards. We need to make sure that it lasts for a long time. So we do have these signs. We do have a contract that is going to procurement after fifteen months. And who wanted to have this sooner rather than later? But we have some glitches in the procurement office, but we're ready to rock and roll with our traffic camera. School zones. So what is a school zone? Well, it's where kids go to school. I mean, isn't that elementary? Well, yes and no. Because a school zone, a school zone is more than that. Yes, a school zone is that you have a significant number of traffic volume where the traffic is coming to drop off the kids, but also, you have a significant number of pedestrians. So part of that is that you are going to be reducing the speed limit. School zone may be within a thirty-five miles per hour, but when you travel, you need to reduce the speed to twenty and sometimes fifteen miles per hour. You have the beginning, at the end of the zone. You have the flashing vehicles. You have also the warning signs for students, where to cross. But also, you have something that is very important. Speed finds doubles when the regulation. So whatever the fine is, it's going to be doubled. So certainly, you want to be mindful for the safety of the kids, but that is going to put a big dent on your pocket. So we have five schools. It's on the Summer Lake Elementary School, Castle Beale, Horizon West Middle School, Pershing School, and the Water Springs. So... It's not within those, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so that one was not within those, yes, thank you, Diana. Yes, so Pershing is not within those, so that is a catch. So... So you have your red crosswalks. So here, it is where we have it, under the schools. And you have that sign in here, just telling children where to cross. The other tool that we have is what you have seen on Rims Road, that this is the rectangular rubber flashing vehicles. So what is this? That is a device that you can push. It is also solar. You have your warning signs indicating. So you have, eh, schoolchildren with your parents just crossing, and you have the arrow indicating that, but the horizontal bar that flashes. And what that flashes is telling the driver that there is some activity and somebody's going to be crossing the road. So those ones are very effective. We have it at several locations. There is a proper place and application for that. This one is the Newbury Park, so the access management. So over here, this one was a two-way road. So of course, people would come in here and cut in as opposed to going through the Rims Road, Silver Lake, and going to the signal, and Winter Garden Vine, so they were just making this connection and going through the neighborhood. And sometimes, people say, we have a myriad of cars just blocking our traffic. We cannot even get out during the peak hour. So what we did, with coordination with the community, we changed this from a two-way to a single lane, traveling towards Rims Road. So there is no traffic coming in. We also put a bike lane, so that is safe for people who connect through the community. And then we added here what we call a race island, that that was preventing and blocking traffic from coming in. So here you have some of the construction work that we have. So this is the formwork with the concrete cements, and this is the striping. We do internally that type of work. So traffic engineer, we have become a one-stop shop so we can work with your community. And of course, this will need approval, but this was just finished recently and it has been a big success. And then, last but not least, studies. So what are we doing now? And of course, these studies, we get very engaged with Commissioner Wilson, with Litberry, you know? And we say, you know, all roads lead to traffic engineering. And we service the public on the fast lane. If there's a sidewalk, there's a sidewalk, there's something. You know, somehow, you know, they get right up to us. But we're here to address your needs. And if this is not what they can provision, we will make sure that it reaches the proper division. So the Summer Lake or Side Del, that one, I went, as a matter of fact, before coming here, I went there and I was trying to make a left turn because the traffic is coming from Ficay and Rims, making a left turn. And I was traveling. That way, I tried to make a left, and I waited almost two minutes. And I had to go in between cars. And I had to go in between cars, so I said, God, protect me, I'm the traffic engineer, so ensure that I don't get in a crash, I still be here. So I was rescuing and saying, wait, wait. So anyhow, so if I had to do that, you know, imagine yourself. So over here, we're looking for a runabout. A runabout? A circle, a square runabout. But we're doing a feasibility study. Once we have this study, we will engage with Commissioner Wilson, and then we will present it to the community to address all your questions. Also, beside there, we have this school, we have the other school that is happening. So an access management, just to make sure that there is proper access, proper traffic coordination, just to make sure that if we need to have a regional meeting open for another signal, perhaps in the future, that we can anticipate. It's better to be proactive than reactive. Then the Village Lake Road, North of Silver Lake, a pedestrian hyper vehicle. How many of you have driven on a, what is it? OB D, Orange Blossom Trail? If you have driven there, you have seen, perhaps this is like a house, a doghouse, that you have two red signal heads, and then one yellow in the bottom. And then, so it is dark, when somebody pushes the pedestrian bottom, it starts flashing yellow to tell cars that you slow down, because it's gonna go to red. Then it has the two reds solid for a while, for pedestrians to cross. And then when they have crossed, then the reds start flashing. Six seconds, which means that if the pedestrians are clear, you can go through, and then it will stop. So this one is gonna be the second one that we have, that we're gonna be doing countywide. So although this is simple, this is gonna be probably three hundred thousand dollars. But this is one of the options that we have. And Turkey Lake is not part of the community as well, so that one was also a typo. So with this, at the last, we have gotten several questions from the community regarding Overstreet and the Tank. I know that we have addressed some of those with the race pedestrian crosswalks and whatnot, but we are gonna be engaging in an overall traffic study. All of these red lights are within the roadway network. Because if you know anything about traffic, traffic is like water. You block water here, but it has to go somewhere. Otherwise, it's gonna be flooding. So if you put something for people not to go through certain street, they're gonna find the path of least resistance. So we're gonna be having an area where we're studying that is underway. We just got our consultant contracts approved, and we have a work agreement. So there's more to come. Again, I think that this is the last. So thank you for your presentation. I don't have my name in there, but you have to give it to me.
Listen, I am sorry, it blows me away that with what I feel like is the most overwhelming of the issues that we discussed tonight, that he can make it so engaging and entertaining. And when I tell you that we rely so much on resident input and feedback, there have been times that a car may have hit a pedestrian crossing caution sign, or I believe there was one actually right outside of a fire station that we hadn't had a resident reach out in a very timely manner. And then we were able to get things fixed quickly. So really, it's a complete partnership for the safety and wellbeing of all the community. And now, of course, I call our next speaker the Fun Uncle of the county, because sometimes, we spend a lot of time discussing really complex problems. And then Matt Sudemeyer comes in and talks about parks. And I'm like, oh, parks is such a great topic. So without further ado, Matt Sudemeyer from Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, everyone. And it's good to be here. It's been about two years since I've been at a public meeting without a face mask on, and it feels kind of good to be back in the swing of things. So real quick, I have just a quick presentation on the parks here in Horizons West. Go over the location of the park sites that we currently have, the ones we're planning on building, ones that we already have budgeted, that are in design, and then ones that are unbudgeted, but in the five-year plan. And then, we have a couple of community meetings coming up to help, to ask you all to attend those meetings to help us master plan these parks and build what you all would like to see in those parks. Put the facilities and amenities in those parks that you'd like. And then lastly, we'll go over trails, a quick slide on our trails program, and then I'll explain that a little bit. So as far as our parks go, Jason mentioned we have adequate public facilities. And within adequate public facilities are parks. The policy for this Horizon West development included adequate public facilities to be built next to elementary schools. They're all about five acres. And we kind of follow Orange County Public Schools, and build the parks behind those schools. So when those schools are being built, that's where we build our parks, and that's how we, the order that we kind of go in. So we have these existing parks, total of sixteen parks. Four are existing right now, and we'll talk about the others that are coming down the pipeline. So we have Summer Lake or Summerport Park that opened up in 2012. Seems like it was just another day. It's a nice five acre park with a dog park playground, picnic tables, and then a community garden. It's really cool and well-liked. Independence Park, opened in 2015, five acres. Large, open, multi-purpose field space in the park, real nice space. Has a little skate park along one of the sidewalks. It's real popular with kids. Then we have Deputy Scott Pine Community Park. A big, that was our large twenty acre park, our nineteen acres, almost twenty acre park, that we built in partnership with Orange County Public Schools for the football stadium for Windermere High School. And then we also have a lit, multi-purpose gridiron and sports field for soccer, football, lacrosse, those types of activities. And then we have Lakeside Village, Phase One and Phase Two. That park, we ran out of funding in Phase One, so we ended up adding money later, Phase Two. So 2018, we opened up Phase One. 2020, we opened up Phase Two, added an additional playground, added a nice fishing pier on the lake there in Phase Two. gazebo, nice pavilion for meetings, for, you know, for the community to get together, have picnics, meet birthday parties, things like that. Now, our future parks, we have a lot of those coming down the pipe. We have Tabor Field Neighborhood Park. Tabor Field Neighborhood Park has been a very, very, very long process in the design. The reason behind that is, is we got through the design, we're a hundred percent complete, we went through permitting, and we got into the South Florida Water Management District permitting process, and we ran into some issues there. So we worked through those issues with our design consultant. And we are going to begin the procurement process, going out to bid for a contractor very soon. And I'm being told by our capital improvement, capital projects division, who manages all of our park development, that that we should see groundbreaking in early part of next year. This is the master plan for Tabor Field Park. As you can see, it's similar to the others. A big walking path around the perimeter of the park, playground, pavilion. And this isn't, this is adjacent to the elementary school, as all of them are, but it's also not too far from, I believe, one of the HOA, if I'm not getting this confused with another one. We really wanna work with the HOA parks that are in a lot of these communities and partner with, and really work closely with those HOAs. So we're not duplicating amenities and working closely with with what's already in the community or in the neighborhood. And then we have the Summer Lake Park, that's a hundred percent complete. Construction should begin by the end of this year, or first part of next year, and then open at the end of next year. Again, it's another five acre tract. And each one of these five acre tracts, we budgeted one point two million dollars for construction, two million for development, two million dollars for design, and one million dollars for construction. This is the master plan of the park. Then we have Horizon West Regional Park. This is our big regional park, two hundred and fifteen acres. We've got ten million dollars budgeted for Phase One. And then Commissioner Wilson, this past July in our budget work sessions, got an additional five million dollars to really help amenitize the park, Phase One. The first ten million dollars on such a large park, a lot of that money's gonna go towards infrastructure, roads, utilities, retention, those types of things. And that with the additional money that the commissioner got, we'll be able to add some, you know, pavilions, playgrounds, canoe kayak launch, and some other amenities. This is the overall master plan. You know, that was a pretty long process we went through. We have hired a UCOM, a planning firm here in Orlando, throughout the country, but they're based here in Orlando. And this is the overall master plan. As far as construction and timeline goes for development, Phase One, we're in the design process now, we're thirty percent complete with design, so we still have a ways to go with design. And then, we'll also be starting on Phase One B. We're calling in this new five million dollars, starting that as well. And maybe we'll be able to catch up Phase One B design and Phase One A and build it all at once, we'll see. But hopefully, we'll have it all finished by first part of 2024. So I talked about the future parks, we have a lot of planned parks. Part of the policy with land development here is that the five acre tracts are provided to the county at no cost by the landowner or the developer. So as they come on board, we'll start programming them into our budget. The ones that we have, we've programmed it, programmed it, in our five year CIP program, and the else should be built by 2026. You look at the very bottom there, Village I. We have Park Number One and Two, that's to be determined, haven't received those yet from the developer. And then I mentioned some upcoming meetings that we have. We have two virtual meetings to get the community and the neighbors out and tell us what they like in our park. We'll go through that process on how we master plan our park. Typically consists of the two community meetings. First meeting, we talk about types of amenities that we typically have in a neighborhood park. Direct everyone to a survey online, where we ask the community to pick out what amenities they'd like. And then we follow with a second meeting with a master plan, design of the park. So we'll be emailing this out, you guys will see. We'll have the art signs out, we'll post everything. Commissioner's office will have this information available as well. But December first, virtual meeting, six to seven. There's the link if you're interested in helping us design Bentonshire Park. tinyurl.com forward slash Bentonshire Park. That'll get you to that meeting on the web, the virtual meeting. And then, if you're interested, January 12th, from six to seven P M, tinyurl.com watermark park. And then, as far as our trail network goes, we have a very, I don't know the word, interesting trail system out here. A lot of it, a lot of it is built by the developer, okay? So the developers build the roads, and they build the trail network, the ten foot wide auto use pedestrian trails adjacent to the road. Depending on if those are being built in the right way or not, depends on who manages them. Some HOAs out there, the HOA is responsible for maintenance. Some, Parks Recreation Division is responsible for maintenance. And some, the Public Works Department is responsible for maintenance. So it just depends. But just to make it a little simpler, the county is responsible for the arterial trails around each village, the perimeter, kind of the arterial trails. And then, the local trails, the ones that go through your developments, connecting your schools, connects to, you know, certain facilities or adequate APF facilities in the villages. Those connect to our arterial trails. So one of the big things though that we do is we go in and fill those gaps, where the developer hasn't built the trail or Public Works hasn't built the trail as part of their road project. The Parks Recreation Division comes in and funds those gaps. One of the biggest gaps that we have, and one of the priorities that we have is to connect the Horizons West Trail System to the West Orange Trail via, I wanna say Dillard Street, but it's not Dillard Street. What is the road? In front of, in front of Fowler's Grove. What's that? Daniels, yeah. So we're gonna connect Tiny Road, Phase One. At Tiny Road, where Horizon West Park is, part of that trail is already built on Tiny Road. Where the county's gonna come in, build it from Tiny Road to Daniels Road in front of Fowler's Grove. And then eventually, the city of Winter Garden will connect. There's already a ten foot wide auto use path there on Daniels in front of Fowler's Grove. The city of Winter Garden will connect the West Orange Trail via Dillard Street to that trail. So we funded ten point four million dollars to build Phase One. That'll get us to that area. It'll go along the 429. We already have right away there, set aside when the 429 was built. We set aside right away to build the trail. And then Phase Two, we'll go from Daniels Road to Winter Garden, where our West Orange Park is near the Roper Y M C A. But that Phase Two is not funded. And that's all I have for my presentation.
So I love ending on that note, because it does give us a lot to look forward to, actually a lot, but all of the information was really good. And I know that, I said it before, I'll say it again, that I think this is the beginning of many of these, where we can share ideas, get questions answered, maybe hopefully work through some things that we don't know about yet, that we want to. I know that when some of the speed limits came down, even though it was after a very long process of analysis, that there was some concerns by the public about how that decision was made. And I think to hear really from the, you know, the wide group of people that have to contribute to those decisions about the safety, the paramount safety, and how that comes in really as our number one job in government is keeping our citizens safe and healthy and considering their wellbeing.